Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting. I would like to first, before we get started with the meeting, introduce everybody to our selectman of the day. Sitting to the right of our clerk is Jack Franco Mano. Did I get that right? All right. Frank is our selectman of the day, and he was able to get that through the-
Jack.
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 Jack Franco.
You're gonna do a heck of a lot better job than I am. I can tell already. And he won selectman of the day, I believe, through the bid auction.
Yeah.
Was it last year?
Yeah.
Yeah, last year. So we're gonna start by reading a citation to Jack, and then he's running the meeting. All right? So, official citation, Foxborough Board of Selectmen. Whereas since the formation of the Commonwealth and the townships therein, many citizens have volunteered and have been selected democratically for the duty to represent their communities to the fullest of their ability. It is an important responsibility requiring temperance, fortitude, wisdom, and above all, a drive to do more for others than oneself. Whereas since the incorporation of Foxborough on June 10, 1778, these individuals, known as selectmen, have led the town through good and bad times, through their guidance and stewardship of the public interest in safeguarding the values and traditions of this great community. Whereas selectman for a day requires the prestigious presence of the designee to honorably attend, open, and run the meeting with his charismatic charm, clever wit, and wisdom beyond his years. Now, therefore, the Foxborough Board of Selectmen hereby do proclaim Jack Franco Mano as the recipient of selectman for a day and the prescribed responsibilities related thereto. This citation is given under the seal of the Town of Foxborough on the 29th day of September, 2020.
Here you go, Jack.
Thank you.
We'll read the agenda first, then we'll- Yep.
At 7:05, there is a citizen's input. At 7:10 PM, a COVID-19 informational update from Town Manager Bill Keegan. At 7:15, Veterans Services will be recognizing World War II veterans John Grace and Joseph Rowl. At 7:25 PM, the Foxborough Cultural Council will be presenting four new appointments for their council. At 7:35 PM, Foxborough's Commission on Disability is presenting a new appointment. At 7:40 PM, Police Chief Michael Grace will give a police department update. At 7:55 PM, the Assistant Town Manager will give his update via Zoom. At 8:05 PM, the Town Manager will give his update. At 7:15, we will have the selectman's update. After the selectman's update, we'll have one action item, and then we'll adjourn.
Awesome.
Good job.
Would you like to lead us to the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anybody here for citizen's input?
Is there anyone here for citizen's input?
Ooh.
We have a ghost.
Yeah. The lights without it.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to the next item.
Seeing none, we'll go to the next item.
Which is?
Which is a COVID-19 informational update from Town Manager Bill Keegan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate that. So I'm pleased to report that we have a good report for you tonight on a couple fronts. The COVID-19 numbers for Foxborough have actually gone down since the last time we spoke on this item. It was, I believe, we had about 13 active cases in Foxborough. We're now down to six, which is really a good position to be in. Since the beginning of COVID-19, we've had 163 active cases. 134 people have recovered. Two people have tested positive for the antigen. And 22 people have been lost in the follow-up phase. A total of 12,670 people have been tested. Now, I think that number's a little misleading because we do have a lot of testing going on at GLA Stadium. A lot of the players and coaches have to be tested on a regular basis. And also, that's also true for not only the Patriots, but also the soccer team for the Revolution. So I think we, you know, there's a lot of numbers built into that particular statistic. So it's a little misleading, but it's still a really good number for the community that show that we're doing a regular testing protocol here in the community, and people are coming out in a very good way. Again, six people testing are active in terms of coronavirus. We have no hospitalizations, not the good news to report. And we've only sustained one death in the entire process. The one piece of bad news is that we did surpass the million-point mark for deaths sustained with COVID-19 and on a worldwide basis, which is pretty significant in that four countries, including the United States, make up about 50% of that number. So that's a pretty significant milestone, and we obviously want to see if we can improve upon that as we move forward from here. Other things that to report on that front is that Governor Baker came out this afternoon and made some additional announcements relative to COVID-19. And it indicates that he's now moving to step two of Phase Three. And so he issued a press release this afternoon, which reads as follows. The Baker and Pleto administration this afternoon announced that lower-risk communities will be permitted to move into step two, Phase Three, of the Commonwealth's reopening plan effective Monday, October 5. And Foxborough does fit into that category. All other communities will remain in step three, Phase One. Governor Charlie Baker also issued a revised gathering order. Industry-specific guidance and protocols for a range of Phase One, Two, and Three businesses are also being updated. As far as, on May 18, the administration released a four-phase plan to reopen the economy based on sustained improvements in public health data. In last month, the administration began releasing data for all 351 communities and towns in Massachusetts on the average daily COVID cases per 100,000 residents and average percent positivity rate and total case counts. Lower-risk communities are defined as those that have not been a red community in any of the last three weekly Department of Public Health reports. And Foxborough has not been in the red status at all. Effective October 5, in lower-risk communities, only a limited number of sectors will be eligible to reopen with restrictions in step two of Phase Three. In lower-risk communities, this includes the following changes. Indoor performance venues will be permitted to open with 50% capacity with a maximum of 250 people. And that affects actually two particular facilities at Patriot Place, Six String, and also the Splitsville will be affected by that. Outdoor performance venue capacity will increase to 50% with a maximum of 250 people. For arcades and indoor and outdoor recreation businesses, additional step-two activities like trampolines, obstacle courses, roller rinks, and laser tag will be permitted to open, and the capacity will increase to 50%. Fitting rooms will be permitted to reopen at all types of retail stores. Gyms, rather, museums, libraries, and driving-in-flight schools will be permitted to increase their capacity to 50%. If a community drops into the red category, it will need to move back to step one of Phase Three until it's out of the red category for three consecutive DPH weekly reports, according to the administration. Communities have the option to proceed more slowly into step two if they choose, consistent with the administration's position that cities and towns can decide to be more restrictive than the statewide rules during the reopening process, though they cannot opt to reopen more aggressively than the state's orders and guidance. The limit to indoor gatherings remains at a maximum of 25 people for all communities. Outdoor gatherings, when we say indoor gatherings, it's general gatherings, I mean, you know, indoor meetings, et cetera. Outdoor gatherings at event venues, outdoor gatherings at private residence and private backyards will remain at 50 people for all communities. Outdoor gatherings at event venues and public settings will have a limit of 50 people in step-one communities and a limit of 100 people in lower-risk step-two communities. That will actually affect places like Lakeview Pavilion and some of the hotels that were having venues, hold venue and events indoors. But, or rather outdoors, those are outdoor-type settings. During a press briefing, Governor Baker said the gatherings order govern in situations where there isn't applicable sector-specific guidance. In other words, businesses such as restaurants and retail stores operate under capacity limits set in guidance for those activities, not the gatherings order. So we remain challenged by some of the larger venue facilities, such as Lakeview and some of the hotels that want to hold bigger events. Those numbers have not changed as of right now. We did meet this past week with the owners of Lakeview Pavilion to talk about some possible options and how we might be able to help them. But the challenge that they face is that whatever guidance that we try to provide for them and is approved by the state, there's gonna be a guidance that's gonna have to be consistently applied across the Commonwealth. So that really puts them in a very big dilemma. The other challenge, of course, is that they plan several months ahead of time for their events, particularly for weddings and anniversaries, et cetera. And it puts them in a very difficult space because they can't even plan without the guidance to give them some sort of an indication. So I've called for a meeting with Representative Barrows and with Senator Feeney next Tuesday to meet with the owners of Lakeview Pavilion to talk about submitting a possible plan that might be a consideration to present to the governor to see if that could be helpful in some way, shape, or form. We want to support them the best we can. Similarly, we've supported a lot of the restaurants, and I noticed that the numbers are starting to tick up in a lot of the restaurants across the town. And we saw, even during the most recent weekend at Patriot Place, those numbers were up a little bit higher, too, based on the number of restaurants that are open there now. So it's going in the right direction, but it's still very slow. And we're not seeing the true impact, a positive impact in the community that we're hoping to get. And it's something we have to continue to work on until we can see a vaccine happen. So with respect to a vaccine, our Fire Department is actually authorized to be giving vaccinations, but we're just waiting to receive the actual vaccine itself. And that goes for the non-COVID-related, obviously, vaccine at this point. But we do not have the actual vaccination itself in hand. We're working on getting some, and then hopefully we'll be able to provide some. But we do provide flu vaccines all across the town. CVS and the other various drugstores, pharmacies will provide that service for you, for anybody in the community that needs it. And the guidance is that you should try and get it sometime in October. And a lot of school-age children have already received it, along with the parents and the teachers themselves have actually received it. So we do recommend that you get it because it is important to try and keep the numbers down, particularly as we get into the colder months and you have the two flu exposures possible at the same time. That could be very dangerous for certain folks. So that's my update, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bill.
Veterans Service will be recognizing World War II veterans John Grace and Joseph Rowl.
Hi, everybody. So this is the third and final installment of thanking a World War II hero. And last time we met, I didn't read the certificate. Shame on me. But I have it here. In the audience today, we are recognizing World War II veteran, Mr. John Grace. Mr. Joseph Rowl, I've not heard. I hope he is okay. Somebody is pulling in, so I'm really hoping that's him. But if not, we're just gonna mail him the certificate with our thanks. The certificate reads, "Now all people by these present that John Grace served in the armed forces of the United States of America against nations which ruthlessly sought to destroy the sacred principles of American liberty, justice, and equality. Therefore, whereas the above person was duly instrumental in the preserving of these inalienable rights for which our forbears and those of this war did not die in vain, be it here known that this name is gloriously inscribed upon America's honor roll of heroic defenders and will, through the grace of God in whom we trust, be handed down to posterity."
Mr. Franco Mano, would you come and help me, please?
Thank you. Thank you.
I want to thank the town for consenting this award.
Can you hear me with all the microphone?
Um, what's that?
That's the microphone.
I want to thank the town for awarding this medal to me. It means a lot to me. And all my family's here with me. And the years go by, they've been very good to me. And I've enjoyed life very, very much. And I hope everybody else will have a wonderful life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, do a picture.
Can I have your mask off for the photo with you?
Take your mask off. If you want, if you're comfortable, you don't get it.
So that's what he looks like.
All right. One, two, three, three smiles.
Way to go, Jack.
Mr. Grace, is it possible you could share one story about World War II that you'd like to tell everybody before one sticks on your mind?
Well, I suppose I have a few. Well, we'll start off. I just turned 18. And the minute I did, I got a letter from the draft board. And they said, "You've got 30 days, and you're gone." And that was President Roosevelt. All he said was, "Greetings." And then after that, I get shipped out. I went down to South Carolina, Camp Croft. It's probably not there now. And I went to six months of basic training. And then from there, we took a troop train over to California. It took 30 days. Every time a passenger train would come, they'd take our train, take it off the line, and let them go. So that's the way that worked. Then I ended up, we got on a big boat, and I went to Japan. Were the first ones there. And that's where I put my military time in. And they assigned me to the ordinance. And yeah, a lot of work to do. I was a welder then. In getting back to the beginning, I worked in, when the war was on, before I got drafted, I was down in Hingham Shipyard. You've probably never heard of it. It was full river, but I was in the Hingham one. I went to school, learned welding. And I stayed there until I got drafted, a year and a half. I got drafted, and that's as far as I went there. After that, I come home to my mother and father and a few of my brothers. There was five of us, no girls. And I went along in life and went back to school and learned a few things. I had a happy life.
Great. It's a great story. Thank you very much. I think she wants to stay longer.
And I didn't know, so this is Chief Grace's father?
Yes.
I didn't realize that.
He's hiding in that.
I see there's a lot of the family. I recognize your wife and your kids. Okay.
Well, you don't have a big family. If you're slow, you lose your seat.
Yeah.
You just don't want him to stay for your PowerPoint presentation. Come on, stick around. We're gonna grill him. Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grace.
Yes. And the Grace family. We'll wait one second for them to leave.
Oh. Hey, Mike? Mike? Mike, you gotta take care of that. Thank you.
Everybody knows David.
Can you guys can Mike see us? I've seen Mike the whole time.
Hey, Mike.
Hi, Mike.
I think that's a screenshot.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, okay.
He does look kind of frozen, doesn't he?
Frozen. There he is.
There he is. Hey, Mike.
I thought it was him.
Nice to see you.
That's a pretty good head thing there, Mike, with the screenshot.
All right. So we'll go to the, Jack, we'll go to the next agenda item.
The Foxborough Cultural Council will be presenting four new appointments for their council.
We came just in time.
You did.
They said 7:30, so I was like, okay, we got time.
We're running early.
Yeah, I know. Good. Well, it's exciting to see so many veterans. I'm Nicole Vishon Hanlon.
Come have a seat, just so for the microphone.
Sure. I'm pretty loud, but, okay. How's that?
Perfect.
Okay. You want me to sing a song? No, I'm just kidding. So Nicole Vishon Hanlon, I'm the chair for the Foxborough Cultural Council now. And I am very excited because we are just getting ready to kick off our grant cycle here October 1. And we needed more members to help us out. So we have two people here today, and there's, because I don't think, is Jess here? I don't know what Jess looks like. You're not Jess, are you? We've, it's so crazy with virtual, right, to know. So anyway, so I have two of our new members. I have Ken Carberry.
Why don't you guys come on up?
Keith Polis. Did I say that right, Keith?
Yeah, you got it.
And we're actually requesting that four new members come onboard, just because we have such excitement to have these new people come in. And so Keith Polis has been involved in the theater and met his wife there. And he is bringing to the table already. He's been helping us pull together community survey results, and he's just jumped right in to help us out. He is also involved in baseball here in Foxborough and has been really avidly involved with the ballet, with the Foxborough Classical Ballet. And so we're really excited because he has a lot of connections with a lot of different things. And we're excited to have him join us with his interests and talents and skills. So I don't know if you want to add to that, Keith? But there, go for it.
Just looking to help in other ways in town, you know? So I saw this advertisement on Facebook for their page and decided, since most of my time is spent either in the baseball fields or helping my kids and our friends with performing arts things, it'd just be something where I could help.
And how long have you been in town for?
We moved here in the beginning of 2013. I'm originally from Philadelphia. Then I moved up here to Attleboro originally, before Foxborough.
Thank you.
And then Ken Carberry just moved from Milton a couple years ago and is at Curry College and has found his love of theater and has become an actor and avid interested in acting. So hopefully, we'll be seeing him in some plays, too. Anyway, and he's already been helping out with technical stuff, too, giving us Zoom links and helping us out, trying to get us rolling virtually. So they both have jumped in already and helping out. So Ken, I don't know if you want to add anything?
I've been in town about a year and a half and just wanted to get involved in the town. And I thought the Arts Council would be a good place since I've spent a lot of time in and around the arts.
Thank you. Thank you. And maybe a little bit about Jessica?
Yeah. So Jessica, I believe she goes by Jess. She is a nurse, but she's also been involved in Attleboro and North Attleboro Cultural Councils in the past. And so she moved recently to Foxborough and wanted to immediately get involved and help us out. She's very interested in community art and really, like, getting people involved and having a lot of PR and connectivity. She's been already our accountability person. Do we have all the information out there for the grants? She's been helping us get flyers out and just trying to help out already as a volunteer, even before being a member. And she's, yeah, I'm not sure if there's anything else. Let's see, what else I said? Oh, she loves doing collage. I think I wrote that down, just as like an interesting point that she herself likes to dabble in art, too. So that's Jess LeBrecq. And then we also have Trish Selby, who was gonna be here on virtual. And she also has moved into the Foxborough area. She's very interested in supporting the arts. She used to be a lawyer that actually helped artists become LLCs, get their, establish their, either they needed a nonprofit or business establishment. And she also has been involved in property management, owning properties. And she always likes to get artists in her places that she has and offer them support, a place, like, she has a place in France that she has specifically for them to be there to finish their works of art, whether it's music or a book or an art piece. And when they moved here, she and her husband just moved here in January, like, right into the pandemic. And they, one thing she noted in her, like, request or information was that they really love the old houses and the history of Foxborough and bought the oldest house on Baker Street. So God bless them. I'm sure there's a lot of work to do as a homeowner myself in Foxborough. But anyway, so she's really excited to have that. And she has two girls in the high school that are involved in different activities that she wants to support continuing with the arts. So is that good? Wrap up for everybody?
Any questions from the board?
I guess I would just, maybe a little PSA. You mentioned the grant cycle, and I know about it. But I don't think a lot of people, you'd be surprised, know who can apply for that. So maybe if you just do like a-
Totally. Thank you.
Quick little clip notes on some of the dates and what it is for the community.
Yeah. So the Foxborough Cultural Council is a part of the Massachusetts Cultural Council. It's a, they give a lot of different funding to many different things, but they have local cultural council grants. For each of the communities, the towns, state, you know, cities in Massachusetts are allocated certain amounts of money that they can give to the communities. And we have to come up with the priorities of what we're going to do and that kind of thing. So that's what we work as members to create. But the release of it is October 1, so this week. And then the closing date is November 16 at midnight, or like, right before midnight, 11:59. So we're looking, usually it's between $50- So we're looking... Usually it's between $50 to $500, or like the smaller grants, but sometimes we've given more and therefore music, cultural diversity, nature and science, art, visual arts, dance, theater, local history. It's a wide range, really trying to help communities and families in our area, in Foxborough specifically, or access from Fox... Have Foxborough residents have access to it, to really help them have more culture, more opportunities for it. So I've just been here five years myself, but I've really loved being involved in Foxborough's Cultural Council and have applied three times to the grants prior to becoming the chair and have done different things with veterans and with, like, thinking globally, getting kids involved with poster projects to, like, really think about how they can make a difference locally. So there's... We work with the Orpheum, like, have put in different things. So there's a lot of different things that people have done. And there's a list of it on the Mass Cultural Council. We have a page that you can go to for Foxborough and see the previously funded grants, so. Does anybody have questions? Are you Jess?
Yeah.
Come in.
Every time.
I was like, I don't know what she looks like, but I'll sing her praises.
Sorry about that.
No, here, I'll get... Yeah.
She sit here so you can use the mic.
You have... You can share something if you'd like.
Oh, well, thank you.
So we've just been introduced to everybody, and everybody spoke a little bit. So why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and...
Okay, well, my name's Jessica LeBrecq. I haven't done too much in the town. I've been in several cultural councils before, so I wanted to offer my experience and my interest. And Nicole seems extremely knowledgeable, so that's a wonderful thing to be around. So I'm looking forward to volunteering in whatever, you know, capacity I can, and I look forward to it.
Thank you.
I had some flyers made out, and I was gonna have their first, like, job be, here's some flyers, go and start putting them out, but I didn't have any... Enough printed out. I talked to Julie, and she had already put them out. Julie Philibert had already got a bunch out, so. Soon, that's gonna happen.
Any other questions from the board?
Just a comment. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your volunteerism.
Yeah.
It's awesome that, you know, you guys got all these volunteers through Facebook, too. I think the EDC had more than, you know, they could even fill. So it just shows how times are changing. And we have four new people who aren't involved in any town boards getting involved because of the way, you know, we're able to get the word out, so thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I just wanna commend you guys for growing. As I've been on the board over the last four, five, six years, you keep adding to this committee and it's just, it's very positive, so thank you.
No, you're very welcome. Yeah, it's been a hard year with the cult... with the, like, pandemic, but we've still had people responding to the survey and people still interested. And we've been really trying to be flexible with how they can be supported. So we hope to get some PR stuff in the cable access and in the reporter soon to, like, share even more how people can get involved. So if you know anybody, please let them know. We wanna help and support them, so, okay?
It's always been a fun afternoon when you distribute the grants.
Yeah.
You have that open house usually somewhere. I know I've been to the Doolittle Home. I've been to the Orpheum, and it's a fun afternoon.
Yeah, and we were gonna do it this fall, but unfortunately, so we're just postponing that. We hope that we'll be able to do that next year and really be able to celebrate. We call it a cultural celebration now. So it's not just like the grantees, it's also a showcase for us to come together. And so we will definitely let you all know when we're doing that to help you have an opportunity to celebrate what people are doing. There's good stuff, so.
That's why it's fun to go see the good stuff that's there, yeah.
I know.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so.
All right, your first motion of the day, sir.
I don't think he has the motions, right?
Is he doing the... Is he doing all... Is he doing the motions?
No, I don't think so.
Do you have all the motions?
I have the motions.
Okay, then you go ahead.
Okay, all right. Motion to appoint Jessica LeBrecq, Ken Carberry, Patricia Selby, and Keith Polis for the... To the Foxborough Cultural Council for a three-year term to end 9/15/23.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations and thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job. Must be the mayor of Foxborough.
Yep.
All righty, Jack, next item. Next item.
Oh. Foxborough Commissions on Disability is presenting a new appointment.
Yeah, don't be shy, Dave.
My name's Margaret Chason, and I'm the vice chair of the Commission on Disability. We're here tonight to welcome a new member. Police Officer Dave Fascaldo was joining our group, which we're very happy about. And I know a couple of weeks ago, you welcomed another member at your last meeting. And we're happy to get new members and a diverse group. So we would like to welcome Dave.
Thank you.
Well, some of us know you, but maybe not everybody. Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Uh, hi. I'm Dave Fascaldo, lifelong Foxborough resident. Been on the force now for about 20 years or so, hired by Chief O'Leary, who's now in the position of one of the Board of Selectmen and now working under Chief Grace. And something that really did start under Chief O'Leary, my role in really, or the getting a passion for this type of thing. At most of the ticketed events at the stadium, we kinda hang over by one of the dedicated handicap lots and make sure there are no scofflaws or violators. A lot of people up there will tend to use somebody else's handicap placard to take advantage of this, you know, when that holder of that placard isn't present, to take advantage of the parking space that more often than not is a lot closer than where they'd probably park. So, you know, I work alongside a longtime reserve officer, Phil Sloan. Couldn't do it without him. So pretty much every ticketed event, when there are spectators there, that's who we are. And we take our job very seriously. And now we'll be reporting a little more, you know, to Margaret, who does amazing work day in and day out, you know, behind the scenes of... I'm on her email chains, and she's really like the, you know, the muscle of the group, too. You know, she, you know, the brains behind it as well, and she has a great staff. So looking forward to working with them.
Thank you, Dave. But you're volunteering as a resident, or are you the police representative?
I think I'm kind of a liaison. I'm gonna do both.
It's both. We don't have an official slot for a police officer, but it's been a very helpful thing to have a liaison with the police department.
Okay, great. Any questions from the board?
Just a comment. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
As a family who has two people who do use a handicap placard, it's nice to know that somebody is watching out, because most people just think it's no big deal. They're parking for five minutes and they're leaving. And that's when you happen to pull up with somebody who truly needs to be in a spot that might be a little closer to where you're going. So it's nice to know that the Foxborough Police have our back, as well as council on disability. And I commend you, your whole board, for what you do, 'cause it is amazing.
Yeah, they agree.
Well, the funds that we get through the fines for the accessible parking violations, we have put to very good use. Think we've bought equipment for the middle school, gym equipment for the children with special needs. We helped put an elevator in at the Orpheum Theater. We helped build the new accessible playground at the booth. I can't even think of all the things. We've done several things over the last year since we had the ability to raise funds. So it's been a really, really nice thing for us. And almost all of that money comes from the stadium.
Expand on that a little bit. So any fines for incorrectly parking there go directly to...
So not all of it. The town gets a piece and the company that does the building gets a piece, but we get the bulk of it.
Oh, that's great.
And so we're able to then use those funds. We do have some constrictions on what we can do. We can't get things or purchase things for individuals, but we can get things that would help a group. I mean, we've done things like provide the shaking fire alarms to the senior housing that they can distribute to anyone who needs one. The fire department, we've provided them with the life... I don't know what they're calling it right now. Operation Lifeline bracelets. They're a radio frequency tracking device for people who might wonder, which is both children and seniors. So we can purchase items that can help more than one person. So in those cases, the individuals or the families can use them. And when they're done, they return them to the fire department, and they can then let someone else use them. So there's a lot we can do. We put in the door openers here and the door openers at the public safety building. So, you know, and those things certainly benefit people with disabilities, but they also benefit everybody else, so.
Thank you.
Motion to appoint David Fascaldo to the Foxborough Commission on Disability for a term to end May 1st, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thanks, Dave.
All right, Dave, unanimous.
All right.
Thank you, Dave.
Surprising. Thanks, guys.
Good to see you.
Police Chief Michael Grace will give a police department update.
You're on, chief.
After he ties his shoe.
Thanks for having me, by the way. I believe I sent the PowerPoint that got sent to everybody for the board to have at their fingertips. It didn't make it, so the residents can't see it. But at least you have it as I go through an outline of where the police department is at. The timing of this, I would say, couldn't be any better, because I will be the new police chief one year in two, two or three days. So for me, it's kind of like a year in review. So with that, I took the approach to say, there may be many things that go on in the police department that the town has no idea what's going on. So the approach tonight is to give just a guideline of what kind of things have been happening in the last year. It isn't gonna be an analytical presentation of statistics. If you want me to come back and doom crime rates and NIBRIS rates and index crimes, I would be here all night, and I think everybody would not appreciate that. So I will go as fast as I can. Please, if anybody has a question, throw it at me. This is... It's a great opportunity. I really appreciate it. So first, we just, a quick little outline of the department. I have a deputy chief. I have two lieutenants. And then under my two lieutenants, I have a patrol division and then an administrative division, which includes the detectives, the court officer, and such positions. The animal control officer and my administrative assistants. That will constitute 39 police officers in the town, in the police department, one ACO and two administrative assistants. We run an annual budget of about $5.1 million. And I will like to say that last year, funds were turned back to the town, and there was no overspending. Of that budget, that is everything inclusive in regards to salary, costs, operating costs, vehicle purchases, maintenance, et cetera. The only thing that would be excluded from that would be a capital improvement item. And this last fiscal year, I actually didn't ask for any capital improvement as well. One thing I would just like to discuss is, when we talk about a police department, its fundamental foundation of what kind of programs and what kind of philosophy is... I think it can best be described as the 21st century policing model, which came out in 2015, 2016 under the Barack Obama administration. And in those six pillars, they consider this, and this is the model of what a police agency should be, or should be practicing, or have policies. And in that, they include everything about building trust in the community, policy and oversight, technology, community policing, training, and officer wellness and safety. So as I review this list, and I review it with my staff, is we're making sure that we're hitting all of those all the time. We can always do more, but as of today, if we have to break down each one of those, which we won't break it all down now, is we're in there. We're meeting this agenda for a 21st century police department. Last October, when I took over as the chief, I came in during the NFL season, the beginning of the budget season, with essentially no command staff, just me and another command officer. Game on. In that time, we were able to keep operations up and running. And that isn't done because I had two people. Is what I had, is I had a department that was team-based. So all of the voids, all of the responsibilities that hadn't been filled yet, the department itself found a way to fill it and pitch in, and we succeeded. By February, we had a command staff up and running. The reason why it took so long is we have a promotional process, and I couldn't go any faster. And when I talk about the team, I talk about what our stakeholders are within the department and how it reflects in our community. So I did a little research. So 77% of the police officers currently working for Foxborough were either raised, went to school here, or currently live here. So when we talk about their investment in our community, that's a gossip number. I'd like 100%, but I'm gonna be real. I'm gonna be a realist. So when we... When things happen in our community and things that are happening, they care because they're vested. It affects them. It affects their kids. It affects their family. Their school teachers that they saw. So I just wanted to put that out there, 'cause a lot of times, and a lot of departments aren't so fortunate to have that benefit. In October, when the new budget started, I kinda peeled back the entire budget and broke it down dollar for dollar. I think Stephanie, you were here for it. It was supposed to be a half hour, went two and a half hours to the AdCom presentation to explain where every dollar goes, 'cause every dollar does mean something. It isn't just a number. Every penny, whether it's in the police department, has a place. And if it's not being spent properly, that means, and it... Then that's wrong. And it needs to be allocated properly to other resources in the community. So that whole project was completed, and now I have the template building forward as I evaluate this next year coming up. How to build off of that and find all of the areas that can be improved, which I anticipate.
And Chief, can I make one comment? 'Cause you said... So I had stepped down from AdCom at that point, 'cause I had pulled papers to run for this board. So I don't know if you recall, but I had made a comment at the end that, and no disrespect to any former chief, and I never listened to a budget from you, chief. So no disrespect for you either. But it was the first time, and it may have been just from a couple of years on AdCom, too, that I was able to really fully understand and to understand where the dollars really go. It's, you know, it's very complex. And, you know, you did a great job getting to the advisory committee. I'm sure you did to this board as well at the time on how your budget really runs. So I commend you for that.
This year, we have hired four offices. We only have three. Unfortunately, one did not pass the police academy. That's strict, the MPTC guidelines. When we send a recruit off, they have to meet the guidelines. If you do not pass, and that's part of their offer letter. So out of the three that we hired in January, only two made it. And just as of yesterday, we sent Patrick McCarthy off to the State Police Municipal Training Academy in New Braintree. And Patrick is a 22-year-old young man. He was one of five kids who grew up on Crocassid Street. And he's very excited, and I know he's very busy right now on day two starting. So we hope to have that. Our two hires are finishing up their FTO program. They have another six weeks to go, and they've been fantastic. They're hitting all their benchmarks and thriving. I will say that after we finally got a command staff in place and felt like we were at the point of allocating and building programs, COVID-19 hit. COVID-19 doesn't feel as scary today as it felt in February or March. February, March, I would say as an agency, we were very concerned about how we were gonna sustain our... to sustain our, our services to the community because based on the information that we were hearing, we, in theory, one exposure could have wiped out a large portion of the department. So with that, we took the initiatives to stop building policies, procurement of PPE. If you can imagine when this, we were at Home Depot buying masks because we just had never experienced it. I won't call it a lack of planning. No one expected this. No one would store that kind of supplies. So we took it on. We became one of the leading agencies in the town about planning ahead, keeping everybody safe, an all-inclusive buy-in with our staff, realigning shifts and ended up purchasing or receiving over 15,000 items of PPE that we have since given out to other departments within the town. We worked every avenue through FEMA, MEMA, and, and we met the goal. We actually are so planned that we anticipated potentially running Gillette Stadium events and had to plan for all the PPE in response equipment to run a 200-plus man detail and ensure their safety as well. Because I was basically told, if you can't ensure the safety of the offices, they may not come because we're putting them at risk. So we have also built that up in anticipating the, this season coming forward. We did experience some COVID-19 exposures within our staff. We had quarantine issues. We managed them, we traced them and we kept everybody safe. There was an open dialogue between the command staff, the employees, because they were concerned. They were concerned about their families. They were concerned about every avenue. And as it, I, I just want to say that on behalf of myself, to my offices, they stepped up. The sick time was nonexistent. They didn't question, they didn't hesitate. When many people went home to work, we came in every day. We didn't miss a beat. And that includes my administrative staff. They showed up every single day and they worked as a team. And our, and our partnership with the fire department just molded even tighter. So everybody felt like we were making sure we were keeping Foxborough safe. So that's an amazing success within the staff.
Chief, can you touch on one of the bullets that is on this PowerPoint about like the challenges with the courts being closed and, and all that? Because that seems to be.
Well, as we know, in COVID-19, many parts of society essentially closed down. We never closed, but we still had to process everything. So the court, the trial courts closed. The Rantham District Court, they had no plan on how to take a custody in, how to ensure safety, how to transport them. They had absolutely no plan. We didn't have an option. We did modify some of our responses when our availability to summons people when we could, but there's statutory mandates for certain offenses where we have to take people into custody. So we built that system. We reached out to the court. We built the Zoom system to communicate. We made all of our court filing all electronically, so no one had to bring the court. And we started holding hearings or bail hearings in our cell block. We made modifications to the cell block to keep the staff safe and we got it done. And we're still doing it. And, you know, the trial courts still haven't had a jury trial yet. So you can only imagine the backlog, what's occurring because the buildings aren't designed to hold a, a jury yet. So we, that has not gone away. So we're still going to have to process that and we're still doing the hearings from the PD. So continue on, but we got it done.
Is there any, any sign of the courts starting to get back to anything soon?
I can't really speak for the trial courts. I, the district attorney's office, they're doing everything they can to process as many cases as they can with the attorneys and doing hearings and trials in front of judges remotely. Superior Court is just starting to do some of their grand juries, only if those are in front of a judge trial, not a jury trial. And so it's, this is, it's an issue, but we don't have the option of not making the arrest. Sometimes it is what it is.
So Chief, if it's, if it's a serious offense, where does suspect, still call them a suspect at that point, where, where do you go from there?
So we've partnered with the Norfolk County Sheriff's Department. So we'll, our court officer will get on, will do it with the phone and will, and their attorney will get on the phone and will have a hearing at the PD. So everybody's involved and if it's a danger, if someone needs to be held, then we have built the process with the Norfolk County Sheriff's Department and we bring them to the House of Corrections directly. So that is occurring. So we're not releasing anybody who shouldn't be released.
Yeah.
Thanks.
When we talk about improvements in the last year within the department, I'll go as fast as I can if someone has any questions. But we have finally met all of our requirements to do for the accreditation process, for the certification process, which is step one of step two. So all of our required policies are in place and the offices are all trained. That's a huge, a huge, huge mountain that we've climbed. Our COVID-19 response plan is not just in place, it's also evolving as we continue on in this pandemic. As we know, it's not gone. We produced active shooter vests for all the offices. As we were doing the research about offices killed in the line of duty, we saw an uptick in rifle rounds and the current body armor that the offices have will not stop that. So they all have a go-to vest in their car they carry all the time during an active shooter scenario. We have re-implemented bringing back our dress uniforms slowly. Our PPE, as I said, we're, we are solid there. Our fleet has been updated. We have reached out through the, the state for, for grants, for traffic. All of our body armor, through the feds and state now is all paid for. The town doesn't pay for anything. We've built the connection to get the reimbursement, 50/50 on all of that. And we just most recently received over $80,000 from a casino grant specializing on traffic needs within the town of Foxborough. The department did have, with this COVID-19, the department's cell phones have been implemented. This is not just for COVID-19 and keeping offices out of the building and doing more from their phones, checking their emails, doing their policies. But the subpoenas for phone calls and text messages among supervisors and within the station are now part of a discovery, which means that if you're on your personal phone and you call the sergeant and ask a question, your personal phone is now handed over and it's gone and all of the data in it is discoverable. So we have been able to merge and research that program and there was a option out there to, with Nextel and I can't believe the other carrier, and they were obligated to provide the service for public safety for 10 years free. So this, so we did have to purchase the phones at a discounted rate, but we don't act, pay for service. We'll deal with it in 10 years, but, so that money is, is not getting taken by, for the town. Our training and professional development plans are in high gear even though with COVID-19. Online training was difficult for police officers. It was something we weren't used to, but I will say with Zoom and all these other options, it's, it's kind of developed. It's, it's, it's better and we've been able to hit our hours. So we anticipate part of our performance evaluations is that we're meeting the guidelines under their evaluations if we see areas of improvement or career development and we are moving right through that right now.
Michael, one thing about training, is there any indication about the opening of South Suburban? Are you having to manage it yourself within the framework of the department?
So, yeah, the SSPI, which runs over at the Foxborough Company, is the training facility for about 37 different municipalities. The COVID-19 wiped them out because they can't do in-person classes. The classes are 30, 40 police offices. So the SSPI, and I was at one of the board meetings and we came up with options for this year because we anticipate trying to go back into the classroom could be a problem. So what we'll do is we've partnered with a private company that has built all the training videos, MPI, which MPTC, I know, Ed, you know this, but they oversee the training for police officers. So we're able to sign all the police officers up in the town and pay $3,000. And now we're able to do a lot of that training right now while they're on shift. So that will cover us minus our CPR training classes. That doesn't meet all of our requirements, but it's a substantial case law and, and items along that. So they're solid. They're gonna go with this for the year. We make our payment and we'll be back at it next year. But we're, we hopefully, I can get the whole department with their yearly training done before December, which usually goes until like July. So we're ahead of the car, we're ahead of the curve on that. We had a couple of military weapons from Desert Storm within our system. We have since retired those based on their guidelines. Are in the process of returning them back to the state as we have updated that, the equipment with, with our own department issued rifles that meet our training guidelines as well. The security system and the card access, if anybody knows, was about 16, 17 years old. It had about nine days of memory and it had no sound. So it's been completely revamped with sound and the property room now is up to par for meeting any kind of accreditation standards. We only had a camera at the door. We didn't have a camera in the room that covered a lot. So it's all, every shelf is now on camera, so to avoid any issues. We've built our website and rejuvenated it. Our public log now is put up there every single week for any of the residents to read what's going on in town.
Never knew that. Ever since it's gone from the reporter, I never knew.
Well, you know, ever since Vin Igo left, we've had a lot of deficiencies.
Anyone could go out there and read the police log now on your website.
Yep, we put it up every week.
Yeah, it's a nice, the website looks great, nice and refreshed.
Yeah, we've moved all of our LTC. If someone is at home and wants to get all of their applications, they can download them all. They still have to bring them in. We, you can't file electronically with the state and anybody looking to get an accident report doesn't have to come to the PD now. We teamed with a Nexus Lexus company, Crass Logics. So if you're a Foxborough resident and you're involved in a car accident, you can go on, get your number, download your accident report for free. Again, it's another way to minimize exposure for people, but include, you know, increase our efficiency. I'm just going to say on the continued things is when we talk about where our agency is, where do we sit with the rest of the country? Are we there? So Foxborough was one of four police departments in the entire country that was selected to build a domestic violence and sexual assault policy. This policy will be the guideline that other agencies throughout the whole country will use. We have completed the domestic violence one. It is in place and everybody is trained and it's up and running. This was not us creating a policy. This was us bringing in all of the local support teams, including the, the trainers for our sexual assault training, the entire district attorney's office and sex crime units. They were all individually interviewed on techniques, talked about best practices. Advocate groups, including New Hope, were all brought in because we wanted to make sure that we had a victim-based investigation as part of it. And with these crimes, and they're so sensitive and how it impacts people, it's very important that we do it the right way. So we have, and that will be being sent out through IACP, which is the International Chiefs of Police, Mass. Police Chiefs, all of them will be getting this and more than likely will be the guideline for everyone in the state. So, yeah. So, well, it's a team. It's, it's, it's a team and it takes a lot of work, but it's been, it's been a great experience. And the officers have embraced it. They get it. And so sadly, if we encounter these crimes, we have a, a process in place where we can do our best to support them. Let's see. The police reform that is happening in Massachusetts is, as we know, is in committee, correct? And we do not know how it's going to look, but it's going to be a challenge and it's going to be a change. Many of the changes that have been brought forward are not new. Something about certification for police officers has been asked for by Mass. Chiefs for nine years and the legislators have denied even talking about it. Funding for police training, as Ed would know, was almost nonexistent in the, in the Commonwealth of Mass. Police training got, is so low on the totem pole is that they had to add a surcharge to rental cars to train the cops in Mass. That's where it was currently before any of the police reforms. That's where they, that's where the politicians, I'm just, we'll say it, considered the funding. And you can only imagine how many rental cars that are not going out right now. So, but I do want to talk about where the Foxborough Police is. When you talk about training and the MPTC, we're many, many years ahead of what you're seeing probably on the news with some of the mandates and the use of force training and their robust internal affairs and the citizens complaint process. Those processes are already there. They exist. And even our policy process, anything that's generated goes to town council, it goes to Mr. Keegan and it goes to the Board of Select of Marks, the representative. And all, everything gets vetted prior to any policy being implemented in Foxborough. Some of the training about implicit bias, that is standard academy curriculum. That, every police officer coming out of a police academy for the last four years has already been trained in that. So when we hear about this training, it's not new to us. It's been eight years in our in-service model. So we're like ahead in so many ways in the rest of the country. And I don't think that gets said enough, but, so I just want everybody to know. The department is moving to the One Mind Campaign, which is getting everybody trained in critical incident training, which is CIT training for calls for mental health. Currently, it's a 40-hour curriculum training. It's unbelievable. You actually role-play in malls around Massachusetts with someone with mental health issues, with earphones going, talking in your ear, and you have to actually role-play and go apply for a job and see the challenges that people encounter. So we currently have over 25% of the police department trained. And then there's a, a CIT first responder, first aid class as well, which we're building on to get the department certified. It's been a little hard with COVID-19 because the classes shut down. Gillette Stadium, if you look at the staffing model of the police department, based on our population, if you use the federal statistics about, they, they vary between 2.6 and 2.2 officers per population. So we're right there. So that would be essentially what a police department would need if you didn't have a stadium. So we take on the stadium in addition to everything else. And that averages over 3,000 hours of our staff's time just to meet the requirements for training, for building the safety plans, the continuous contacts with our state and our federal partners, payroll, workman's comp issues, pending lawsuits, investigations and every single crime, because we are the primary law enforcement agency up there. So everything what happens up there, the Foxborough Police Department gets. Every threat, every phone call, every social media post. And we work directly with the NFL Security and their, and their team, the G-SOC team. And so we also do all of that. Just, and if anybody has any questions about how it all works, obviously I can't give all the details, but I just think it's important for people to know, this isn't someone working a detail. This is someone who is working their regular hours. This is how much it draws on us.
Chief, other than yourself, is, is there one person that heads up things that go on at Gillette?
Yeah, so as a police chief, I'm ultimately in charge as the incident commander. But my deputy chief, Noonan, is the, I would say the liaison with their, their security team, who on the day-to-day, we go back and forth. And in this COVID-19 model, we plan as the events come in, we work with their team, we see, we do the intel, we design a safety plan. But we don't even, this last year has been so interesting. All right, we're gonna have fans. We're gonna have a concert with fans. So we've been building models all along, anticipating what could happen and we're continuously building. I mean, we're all sitting here now, are we gonna have fans in Gillette? Are we gonna have 10,000? We're gonna have 14,000? We're gonna have fourteen thousand? And we have certain guidelines through their safety plan that we have to meet, and we have to do cost analysis. So it's constant back and forth, rev games with fans. So.
So just while we have you sitting here, not to get into a big discussion.
If I go late, it's gonna be your fault, okay?
Big discussion about it, because we all heard the plan. I mean, we were told that, you know, Chief Grace, Chief Keller backed everything. So just in a sentence, you felt real comfortable with, if that stadium opens up with fans. You know, we made a decision here at this table based on the thing. So you, you felt that everything was as prepared as you could be for what might go on up there.
Well, let's make it very clear. I'm not the board, like, I'm not the CDC. So those guidelines and the numbers and the upticks, those are gonna dictate a huge decision-making of where we are as a community, where we are as a state.
So you're doing the same thing we did. We're relying on the experts, yourself.
Well, if our numbers are really low, we work on, okay, if we have this many people, what, how, and are we gonna manage the staffing? How are we gonna manage the spacing? How are we gonna manage security? How are we gonna manage the gates? So my job is to make sure that the security of the event is being held. So they have, not they, but collectively with the fire department in Gillette and the NFL, the NFL's robust COVID-19 mandates are massive. So obviously, that responsibility is on Gillette, which they are meeting every single day. We even did some dry scenarios, some live, I'll call them like tabletop exercises, but it wasn't. What we did is we created four or five scenarios in the stadium, brought our staff in, and we ran through them to see how the interaction would go. How would our safety measures? How would our PPE be given out? How would we transport them? Where we would bring them? And it was excellent. We really, we learned a lot from it. So, I mean, I think right now, the number is eleven thousand, fourteen thousand, in a stadium that holds eighty thousand or seventy-eight thousand. I think, you know, as we, the numbers will dictate if that number goes up or down. But that give spacing, that venue is so large, you know, you have a revs game and there's nine thousand people, and you're like, where is everybody? Spread it over the three tiers and the clubs, it's massive. So the footprint does allow for that. So, yes.
I kinda want to put you on the spot in here.
You can put me on the spot. It's okay, because it's been constant dialogue.
How comfortable you were. Obviously, we made that decision, and I felt very comfortable with my decision, but there was a little backlash. And I just wanted to like hear from you that like you just felt, you know, you felt comfortable as well, is when this might move to the next step.
Yeah, yeah, because we've run the models, we've done the scenarios, we've looked at the plan, and we're looking, does it work or does it not work? And it's, you know, it's.
A lot of time that went into it.
Well, it's important.
I think some people felt like it was just a decision that was made lightly and.
No, this started, you know, we.
That's why I'm dragging some of this out of you.
Started all spring, we started. Like, how do we, how do we prepare for this? You know, we're just, we're building like PPE packets for every officer who shows up. We have to designate a regular call to a high-risk call, and what kind of mask you're gonna wear, and what kind of protection and particle filtration you have. So all those things have been discussed and planned for. It's not new, so.
Good, good for you guys.
Just, and finally, I just wanna thank the board for having me here, and Mr. Keegan for asking department heads to come, instead of just sitting at AdCom once a year and saying, all right, this is what we got. And most importantly, the residents of Foxborough for their outstanding support for the men and women of the Police Department. We have been through such an interesting time. I, you know, and I'll say, I'll call this here anything but normal. And, and I just hope as a community, we continue to look at all the good and focus on unity and not division across the board, within departments with each other, on social media, because it's, you know, it's sad sometimes, some of the division, what's going on. And I think we could all use a little, a little more niceness in this world. But.
Thank you, Chief.
Nice way to end it.
Yeah, outstanding report. Any questions for the chief?
Just a comment, just as we draw on, you know, the first year, like you said, thank you for your, your leadership and come in to give us this update, and that police log.
Police is fascinating, bro.
Instead of the binder down in the police department that we have to keep updating. And, and as always, the door is always open, like, to anybody, to residents. I get emails, I get phone calls, questions. It's important to have that dialogue, so. And of course, as board members, come on down anytime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say before Mike, before Mike leaves, as you might guess, Mike did say that this is, he's coming up with his first year anniversary, so we did his performance review this morning.
Was it the PowerPoint?
It was the PowerPoint. But, but, you know, he, clearly, passed a flying college, did a really nice job. But he's done a great job. I mean, it's really been, it's not been an easy year, especially for a first-year chief. I mean, it's been extraordinarily difficult to maneuver through this, and he's done as good a job as I could have ever asked from anybody to do. So I appreciate that. And I wanna say publicly that he's done a great job.
Thank you, thank you. And I'll say it one last time, the men and women who work below me, they're the ones that make me look good. I just wanna tell you that. So it's very important. It should never, ever be lost.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
You sound like.
Oh, you're back.
There you go.
All right, next big item.
Michael, and your hat too, because if you don't, if you don't, if you don't take that, I might put that on my head.
The Assistant Town Manager will give his update via Zoom.
All right, Mike, you're up.
You're up, Mike.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board of Selectmen members. So first, I wanna report on some recruiting. We have a new employee in Town Hall in the Veteran Services Administration. She comes from Bridgewater State University, where she was involved in benefits and supporting veterans in their, in their college pursuits after their work in the military. She's the administrative assistant to that department. She'll be working with Ally Rodriguez, and her name is Carrie McKenzie. So, you know, if you see a new face in Town Hall, you know, that's who that is. We are working on a number of new recruitments, and you may have seen them posted. So I'll just run through them. Current recruitments, you know, are, these ones are all filling vacated positions. So in the Public Safety Building, we are, we have a custodian position posted. We posted that on September tenth, and that, you know, we started screening those, and we're looking at them, and they go. That's a forty-hour position. In the, in the library, we had a position posted since September tenth, and that position posting closed last Friday. And that's for a senior youth services librarian, and we'll be moving quickly on that, on that position, you know, along with the, you know, the library director and his team. I'll be working with them, supporting them in this, this hire since, you know, Mrs. Rosetti retired after many, many years working for the town of Foxborough. She'll be sorely missed by many, and we certainly wish her the best in her well-earned retirement. The next one is a nineteen-hour part-time position that we also posted on September tenth. And, and that is an open position as far as until it's filled, and that's a building custodian. And then lastly, we have three DPW positions that have been vacated. So on September fourth, we advertised for a DPW mechanic, a water systems technician we advertised for on August thirty-first, and on the same date, we advertised for a highway laborer. And those are all open until filled, and those can be, the details can be seen on the, on the Human Resources page of the town website. Another thing that we've been very busy on throughout the summer, and as, as many of you know, I, I went out in the middle of July after an accident and shattering two hands, and then a couple weeks later, came back and started working remotely and trying to support the department. And, you know, because, you know, four other people had taken up, you know, parts of my duties. But during that time, we had a huge uptick in unemployment claims, and some of them valid, many of them that, that should not have been claimed. But then the biggest problem was fraudulent claims. We've seen a huge problem with fraudulent claims. In other words, people that are working for the town, both school and townside, who had not put in a claim, and, you know, somebody had gone and either attempted to take their identity or, or, you know, at least their, their money, or the town's money. And so we're fighting those claims, and we have no intention of paying those. But that's been a huge effort on, from, you know, from Darlene DeLuca, Bill Yupna, and now we're very happy to have Jim McGowan back, you know, to help in that effort. And then on the town side, myself and Sarah Ackerman. So that's been a huge effort, you know, up to date, and I think that'll go right through the, probably through December, we'll be working on that. Next big area is police contract negotiations. We have our third meeting with the police union coming up on October sixth. And, you know, we'll brief the Board of Selectmen on the status of those negotiations when we get to that point. But to this point, our conversation and our, our meetings at the table have been going well with the, with the police union. They're, they're a group of professionals, and we carry ourselves the same way. Last week was my first full week back in Town Hall, although I'd had three other, you know, days prior to that. And during that first full week, in addition to regular duties, Bill and I also attended the ICMA, or International City County Managers Association, in their first virtual conference. And it was actually my first international conference with the ICMA, although I had attended a regional conference several years ago in Newport. Areas that I focused on were leadership, communication, transparent budgeting, collective bargaining and negotiation, and local excellence. And I know Bill was also participating in that, you know, Monday through Saturday as, as well. And he, we hit a couple of the same, you know, educational segments, but he also hit, we had some different ones as well, you know, divide and conquer, and bring that as much knowledge and experience as we could from the conference. The, I have two, two last things, and one is on September twenty-eighth, we participated in ClearGov budget training for department heads. So this is something that Marie Almodovar, our Director of Accounting, had set up, so that we're moving forward into a modern method of governing, of budget development that will be more transparent, because that's what we're shooting for with the residents. And it'll be, we think, a smoother, better way to, to put the budget together. And I'm sure Bill will have more to say on that as, as time rolls on. But, but that was a huge success, that training for our department heads. And, and the last thing is something we've talked about quite a bit, that we do have funded for this year, and that is human resource software. And I'm interviewing several companies so that we can bring them on board to help us, first of all, with our recruiting, and then, you know, other things as we move along. So that's all I have for my report, unless there are any questions from the board for me.
Any questions?
No, just a comment. Nice to see you. Nice, you know, nice to know that you're, you're back at Town Hall. But I haven't, this is the first time I've, I've seen you since you've been out, and happy that your recovery's going well, Mike. Good for you. We missed you.
Thanks, Stephanie. It's, it's good to be back.
Obviously, you couldn't shave with two broken hands, right?
No, there was, you know, I, I won't go into detail, but that first month, there was nothing that I could do on my own, which is so humbling. You become, you become so appreciative of your significant other when you can do nothing for yourself.
For better or for worse.
Better or for worse, that's right.
Absolutely.
Good seeing you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
The Town Manager will give his update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I don't think anybody's happier to see Mike back than I am. Needless to say, it's been, it's been the challenge, not having him around. And you don't realize how much you, you need someone until they leave. And so it really is great to see him back, and he's been a tremendous help. Even, even if he is limited in some ways, he's still been very, very helpful in a lot of ways. One of the things that I didn't wanna pick up on, that Mike talked about, was the ICMA conference this past week, which was tremendous, even though it was virtual. It was, you know, the difference, the challenge of doing things virtually is that you, you miss out on the, on the connectivity with people and, and talking with people, the conversation that you can have with people from all over the country, but you don't really get to have that during a virtual conference. So that's, that's a missing element of that, doing it that way. But, but having said that, one of the things that I was, I was struck by was, one of the sessions that I went to was on a leadership session, and it talked about how one of the major challenges we face as a country today is leadership amongst organizations. And one of the things that they mentioned was that they did a national survey of, of individuals and asked them about how they felt about Congress. And the, the approval rating from that Congress was about eight percent. And then they asked them about state government, as you went, went down the scale, and the, and the approval rating was down around forty percent. But when you got to local and state, local government, local and city government, the rate, the approval rating was up over around seventy-two to seventy-three percent. And the reason that is, is because there are a lot of folks, professional managers, that, that help run towns, that, that help with, with generating that kind of interest and, and trust. Because as managers under the ICMA Code of Ethics, we have to remain apolitical. So we don't get involved in the politics. That's for others to determine, to do that and to handle that. Our job is to make sure that gets done, the work gets done. And I think that's part of the reason why the, the approval rating is such, was much higher at that level, is because we're here to just do, to get the work done and stay out of the, the political fray. And right now, it's, it's a huge challenge, because we even get, we get phone calls periodically now about stuff that people see on, on social media. And if I, if I encourage, if I encourage anybody to see something that's actually on Netflix now called The Social Dilemma. It's actually a very interesting piece of work that was done about what's, how social media has, how it's helping to really divide the country in so many different ways. And so, so much so to the point where it struck me that we're now at a point where the Democrats and Republicans are so far divided, in terms of their, their positions, that it's leaving a huge gap in society. And it's causing real concern, and we're starting to see that even at the local level. So we're, the word that I get out to our department heads and to our folks here is just, don't get involved in the middle of the, of the fray, because it's gonna be a little, there's gonna be dust-ups about this all, all around town and throughout the country right now because of what's going on politically. So we try to remain out of that, stay out of that fray, and just stick with the facts and just deal with, with folks on that level. But just to get back to some of the local things that are going on, the water ban, we just, I talked with Chris Gallagher this evening before it came on the air tonight, and he indicated that they're waiting to get, that they think they'll have approval on new, the new water plant as of tomorrow, and that they hope to turn on the spigot as of midnight on, at twelve oh one Thursday morning, that they hope to be able to turn, regenerate the system on that, on that basis. They will then appeal to the state DEP to see if in fact we can relieve, relieve some of the, the water restrictions that we've placed on the community. But of course, we're still in a, in a, in a very tight water restriction, given the, the amount of water that we've not had in the past several months. So we, we're hoping that we'll get some rain tonight and into tomorrow. But he said unless you get four inches of rain anytime soon, it's not gonna really help the restriction that's in place right now. Tomorrow, I'll be meeting with the seniors, do a monthly meeting with the seniors to go over their concerns and address any issues that they may have. Always look forward to seeing that, that group. Renewal licenses is actually on schedule, and Katie has, in our office, has done a great job with sort of bringing us up to date on that. Those licenses will be going out this week. So the renewal process is already begun, and which ultimately culminates in the board's approval of those renewals sometime in December, at one of your December meetings. So we, so she's staying ahead of the process in that regard. And some really unfortunate news to pass along. And some really unfortunate news to pass along is that Drax, the canine, passed away this week. And so we're certainly sorry to see that happen. I just reported to you just a few weeks ago that Drax was really debilitated by a, by a brain tumor, unfortunately. And it got the best of him, obviously, and, and he passed away this week. So we're sorry to see that happen. They have a new dog that's being trained and will be on duty in probably the next few months, but we'll certainly, we're gonna just pass along that unfortunate news. The new budget software that Mike mentioned is, was rolled out this week, and so not only is that gonna be helpful, I think, in terms of transparency, but it actually will help us get to one of our goals, which was to actually get to the point where we can actually present the budget to the GFOA for a national budget award. And that's been our goal internally that we've had for a number of years, and we've never really quite gotten to that point, but we think that the, this software will actually help us put it in a certain position so we can actually bring that kind of recognition to the budget process here in Foxborough. And something else that the, that everybody's been interested in is the train crossings, and I did receive information from Chris tonight that they're going to start the one, I believe it's on Mechanic Street, will start on October 30th, that weekend. They're gonna do back-to-back weekends, and they're gonna stay away from weekends to which the Patriots are home. So they're gonna, and the next one will be on November 9th, the weekend of November 9th. So you'll, you'll see that construction starting to take place, to replace the one on Colcasse Street as well as the one on Mechanic Street. Just to, just to follow to what I mentioned last week, two weeks ago was the Tony Calcio Award was presented on behalf of the YMCA to the, to our, our committee, our Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee, who actually did a terrific job of getting recognized for the work that they do in child protection. Tony Calcio, as you recall, was a tremendous advocate at the YMCA for protecting children, and they named this new award in his name due to his unfortunate passing during the past year. They already mentioned the cultural grants earlier, and we did submit an application for, to the MMA Innovation Award Committee for, for our work in the fire department, for the paramedic, Community Paramedicine Program. I believe it's the only one of its kind in the state right now, and it's certainly, we want anything worthy of consideration as an innovation award, so we're hoping that that will get positive consideration. Restaurant meeting went well, that we had a few weeks, this past week, and then as we, we worked on a letter to the governor about some of the things that we would like to see, turns out within 24 hours, the things that we were asking for actually got implemented. So, so sometimes it's, it's better to be lucky than good, and this was one of those cases where that happened, so we were really fortunate to see that happen. And then, folks have been really good about the no tailgating situation at Gillette during the past few home games. Patriots, you know, played, as you know, played at home this weekend, and we had no, no incidents with folks, even though a lot of people have enquired about doing that, believe it or not, is actually doing tailgating at some of the parking lots, even though we're not allowing fans into the stadium. We remain hopeful that we may see something, if the numbers remain low, that we could see something hopefully in the next two months, that we'll see starting, fans starting to come back into the stadium for at least some of the remaining games of the season. We added some really good information, a really good announcement this past week that the, that Snyder Electric has pulled a permit for a $4.8 million renovation of one of its buildings on the campus. This was part of a planned renovation project, when they decided to close off one of their Naponta Street facility, they are actually, they're starting the renovation process now, and that project, we hope, will be done by, by, I believe, by April or May of next year. So it's a, it's a pretty exciting renovation project for them. We're happy to see that they're underway on doing that.
Bill, which building is that? Is that the Naponta Street building or the Mechanic Street building?
It's on the Mechanic Street building, yeah. They'll be adding on to that in the back, and it'll be, it'll be a great, great new And then the work on the, the comment for the electric project, to which Snyder has actually donated $150,000 for, we're looking to begin project, that project in the middle of October, and hopefully have it up and ready for the, for the holiday decorating season. So making progress on lots of fronts despite the fact that we are still in the middle of the COVID-19 restrictions. I'm also proud of the employees who, we're still one of the few towns around that's actually fully operational. And, and even though we've had some challenges with daycare issues, which we're still working on, and we're gonna probably team up with YMCA on that a little bit more, we think that folks here have done a really good job, and I'm really proud of the work that they've done. So, thank you.
Question on an email you sent out about the, the health insurance taking the holiday?
Yes.
Is the town's portion also-
Yes.
So how much is that gonna-
So we're gonna save, I had that number in my head, and I'm sorry, apologize, you would've asked me that tonight, so, I'll get you that number, but I will announce that and put that out there. But we actually, because of what happened during the past year, COVID-19 actually restricted the amount of actual surgeries and special operations that occur at the hospitals and doctors' offices because they couldn't have, they didn't have access. And, and most of the actions at the hospitals were switched over to see, to the COVID-19 treatments. So as a result, a lot of the elective surgeries did not get done this past year. That drove down the cost of health insurance for virtually every program across the state, and across the country for that matter. So as, to a way to address that, we actually paid into the program, but at a higher rate. Maya came back to us and said, we're gonna give everybody, we're gonna give the towns and the employees back some money as a result of that. So that was a really positive thing, and all the employees actually saw that, that bump in their, in their paychecks this past week. The town will actually save the matching amount, which is actually 70% of that money, so that's a, that's even a more significant amount than the employees received themselves.
And did we have an option on that, or did everyone just get the holiday?
Everybody got the holiday.
So you can't roll it forward to next year when everyone has those elective surgeries and it upticks that up?
Actually, no, so the reason, that's the reason why we didn't do it in a different way, because we kept the rate, the pay, the rate, the same rate, so that in case we do get a situation, it's gonna be, gonna be paid at the same level. So we didn't, we didn't, we didn't create an artificial hole in the process, so we're gonna continue to pay at the same rate.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
We have the selectmen's update.
Anything from the board?
After the selectmen's update, we have one action item.
Alright, Steph.
Alright, motion to approve the June 23, 2020 meeting minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, there was one item I did wanna mention too, that whereas, there was a donation of $30 that was given to the Boyden Library, and it was for the purchase of books in honor of Mrs. Rosetti. And it was from, the donor was Ashley Jarrett and Archie Clement, and it was for the amount of $30. So thank you very much for that donation.
Okay, the one we all wait for.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Awesome.
Thanks, Jack. Good night, Jack.
Jack did a great job.
Nice job, Jack. Yeah.
Good night, everybody.